Good evening, it is now 6:30 and I will call the Monday, June 11th, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Thank you everyone for joining us, thank you everyone in this crowd for joining us tonight. Our first item on this evening's agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff on this evening's agenda or the commission?
Mr. Chair, I beg to move that we change item five. Due to certain exigencies, we change item five to three and three to four and four to five, five to six.
Okay, we have a motion to update the agenda, do we have a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the motion carries. Our next item on this evening's agenda is approval of the minutes from the May 29th, 2018 Planning Commission Meetings. Are there any changes to those minutes from the Commissioner's staff? No changes, I would stand for a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion, second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the motion carries.
I abstained on that.
An abstention from Commissioner Walter. Our third item is discussion of the 2018 Planning Commission Work Plan Item to Continue the Solar Ordinance Review. We are going to continue that item to a separate meeting because we're missing Commissioner Benke, who would like to participate in that item. So if you are here for that, we'll be discussing that in two weeks at our next meeting.
On June 25th.
On June 25th. Which brings us to our fourth item, which is a public hearing for Park Nicollet Clinic for a preliminary and final plat of Ridge's 13th Edition, rezoning lots 1, 2, 3, Block 3 Nicollet Terrace from mixed-use to mixed-PUD, mixed-use plant unit development and planned unit development amendment for modification of existing clinic and removal of parking structure to allow for the construction of a new 80,000 square foot clinic and parking ramp located at 14000 Fairview Drive. And Ms. Dean is presenting this item. Excuse me.
Good evening, Chair members of the commission. I do want to note that we do have the applicant representation in the audience in case there's any questions at the end of my presentation. The Park Nicollet site, it's approximately 11.7 acres in total. That's area that's highlighted on your screen identified by the word "site." The property, it's located east of Nicollet Avenue South. It's located south of Nicollet Boulevard and west of Fairview Drive, which kind of snakes around the property. The overall development not only includes the existing location of the Park Nicollet facility, which is approximately 94,000 square feet and the existing parking structure, but it also encompasses land that is to the southwest off of Arthur Terrace. Currently, there's a vacant house and vacant parcels just to the south and west. Those properties will be, well, the house will be demolished and the properties will be combined into what will be Lot 1, Block 1 of, I believe it's, Park Nicollet 13th Edition? Ridge's 13th Edition, had to skip ahead there a little bit. Arthur Terrace will ultimately be vacated, which will mean, which means it will go into a usable space or usable land. The area surrounding is B3 PUD to the west, B3 PUD to the south, mixed-use PUD to the west and to the north as well. This property, it's part of the overall Ridge's planning development or master plan, which was originally approved in 1974. There have been multiple renditions and applications throughout that time period. Like to highlight some areas. In red is the Park Nicollet property or a portion of the property that's proposed to be developed further today. We have Fairview Ridge's Hospital. We have the YMCA. And over this location, we have assisted living Ebenezer Properties. And then future housing that has yet to be developed to the north of the Park Nicollet site. The whole area is approximately 100 acres. It's bound by McAndrews to the north. Park, or I'm sorry, Nicollet Avenue to the west. Interstate 35 to the south, southeast, and Portland Avenue to the east. This gives you a closer view of the preliminary plat, which is part of the request. And ultimately, the final plat will be part of the approval as well. Again, it basically turns the lots to the southeast into a usable portion of the property and the Arthur Terrace Road would be vacated. This is the proposed site plan. Again, the existing medical clinic to the north portion of the property. The proposed medical clinic is located, highlighted in blue, approximately 83,000 square feet. Three-story building, we'll see the elevations in just a few minutes. This is the approximate location of the existing parking structure. That would be, will be demolished. And a new parking structure will be built in the southern portion of the property in this location. Surface parking is proposed along the west, south. Some ADA accessible parking spaces will be along the eastern portion of the, of the site. Unfortunately, when I transferred the, the site plan over, it kind of distorted the, the view of the site plan. So anything you see in this black hatch is the drive aisles. Anything in this gray is the parking area. Sidewalks are located throughout, not only the parking lot, but throughout the perimeter of the buildings. I should highlight that there is colored concrete delineating the drop-off pickup area in front of the building as well as connections to some of the outdoor dining for the employees as well as some of the benches, which are part of the amenities that Park Nicollet's proposing in the future. And there's also sidewalk connections between the existing building, proposed building, and the parking structure. There is a plan in the future for Park Nicollet to expand further. They have showed areas for future expansion at the ends of the proposed building. They are proposing to construct the building to meet fire codes so that it can easily be accomplished in the future to do that expansion. There's also opportunity to connect the buildings, not only the parking structure, but also the existing clinic building in the future. There's also a proposed structure expansion that is highlighted within the western portion of that parking structure. Depending on our code in the future, this may or may not trigger a planned unit development request. Based off today's code, it would be before the Planning Commission, should they want to expand that parking structure or the, the medical clinic expansion. Total parking, it's 724 parking stalls and the parking structure is three-level as well. Snow storage is well provided near the parking structure and other areas of the, the property. Landscaping, the site's well landscaped. Currently, 74% of the building perimeter is landscaped. We have a city code requirement that 50% of the building has landscaping. The site itself, green space, it's at 39.4%. This exceeds our city code requirement. It also exceeds the planned unit development minimum of 30% that was identified for this site. The Ridge's master plan shows a goal of 40% green space for the entire development. Staff did a calculation and found that based off of what they're proposing, it should not impact future development on other sites within the master plan. In fact, those future sites could build 29% greens or incorporate 29% green space on their lot and still the overall master plan would be at 40%. And so we're comfortable with that proposal. Parking lot landscaping is at 8%, city code threshold's 3%. And there was true replacement mitigation as part of a previous parking lot expansion that was done, I believe in 2015. The proposal meets that mitigation requirement with the proposed landscaping that's installed. The grading plan, I would defer to our engineering staff to speak more to that. But there, throughout the vacant portion of the property, grading will occur to accommodate the future parking and the parking garage. The, I should note that as part of the proposal, Park Nicollet is working with the city to truck some of the excess dirt or soil to the city's arch, future archery site. That is certainly a benefit to the city because it's not at, there's no cost with that transfer. Certainly, if there's any questions after, we can jump back to any of the slides. To give you a perspective of how the building will look, again, three stories. There is proposed to be a canopy at the drop-off pickup location. A portion of the building is one-story and, and a majority of it, I would say, is two-story. Depending on which elevation you look at, it may appear to be taller than other portions of the, the building. It really ranges anywhere from about 50 feet to, I believe, 63 feet at the measuring, at the midpoint of the grade up, depending on what elevation you're looking at. City code has a requirement within our mixed zoning district, there is a, a threshold. Just flipped my notes. There is a 50 per, or I'm sorry, 50-foot building height within the mixed zoning district. Anything over that triggers the need for a conditional use permit or in this case, a planned unit development. So an applicant can request to go higher. They just have to demonstrate that they meet parking space, parking spaces, green space requirement, that it's not a heavy demand on our sewer and water system that either can't be met or can't be mitigated or can't be mitigated and staff feels that they are within this threshold. As well as the overall Ridge's master plan has multi-story buildings and balanced with the existing building that's also three stories. Staff felt that this was acceptable. As far as the mix of materials, the primary elevation's the east elevation, which consists of mainly brick and glass. There is some fiber cement board. However, the, that main view that you'll see is of high-quality material. The west, north, and south elevation, I would say, is primarily fiber cement. A lot of gray tones. You'll see in the existing building that there are also white and gray tones as far as on the trim and the, a portion of the building has cultured stone that's of gray color. The parking deck, three levels. The end caps do incorporate some of that fiber cement. The gray tones also, I should have pointed out on the main elevations, that there is wood textured fiber cement as well and that is carried over. Precast is on the, I guess, middle portions of the parking ramp as you see the levels going up and down. This is a, a rendering or perspective of what the proposed building will look like. The applicant is proposing bike parking. You'll see that in front, not only within the front of the building for customers and patients, but there's also a bike parking locker proposed within the parking structure. And that will be used for employees, they'll have access to that in a little block. So I've seen the location at the Methodist Hospital and it'll be similar to that. So it's a nice, secure facility. Ballards are also proposed near the front entry, decorative ballards, as well as, I had mentioned before, colored concrete to delineate some of those pedestrian paths and vehicular areas. Park Nicollet's also proposing to enhance some of the landscaping around the perimeter of the site. Right now, you'll see sod and, and some trees, but they're adding, proposing to add additional year-round color with the use of perennials and grasses along the perimeter as well as some native landscaping in the interior portions of the site. Staff sees that as a benefit. Just another perspective to show the existing building in relationship to the proposed building. Some of those gray tones are carried over as well as the, I should highlight the windows. Park Nicollet tried to, the architect tried to carry over some balance with the, the look of the windows as well. Just another perspective. This is the parking structure on the left-hand side, the new building, the existing building, and then across the street, Fairview Campus. And then this is the backside of the building. Mainly would be screened by the existing vegetation, which is in that outlot. I do want to go back to the site plan quick to point out the trash enclosure and loading facility will be on this north portion of the property. Additional details, we're asking that the applicant work with staff on regarding trash enclosures and ensuring that there's a roof covered within those areas. Other than that, it is well screened by the existing conditions and the conditions that will be maintained on-site. There are just a couple of deviations that I already, I talked about a couple of, or one of them, but I'll start from the beginning. There is a deviation requested for a monument sign setback along Fairview Drive. Oh, here we go. It, there's a zero-foot setback request and it's partly because, as part of the plating of the property, the property line is currently over the sidewalk. So it extends almost, I think, to the street. So as part of this proposal, Park Nicollet's dedicating or realigning their plat so that the property line is on the, the other side of the sidewalk. So currently, their existing monument sign, which is, I think, this portion, that currently meets a setback requirement. And to keep the monument signs in line and they're proposing to have it in a similar location, unfortunately, it becomes a zero-foot setback. But staff is in support because of, it would have met city code had they not dedicated the additional right-of-way for the sidewalk to be in public right-of-way. I should also point out while I'm on this slide that there's a pedestrian sidewalk connection that's part of the condition to connect with the Fairview property across the street. Temporary parking during constructions proposed to be accommodated across the street. So this will help facilitate that. Also with the master plan approval, part of the original concept was to have trails and sidewalk connections and to have cross-parking throughout the entire development. So that's really, it, it's in keeping with that theme and flavor. Let me go back to the deviation slide. Deviation to the height of the building, that was mentioned before. City code allows up to 50 feet unless a conditional use permit or planned unit development is part of that approval. And then a deviation for parking. So 747 parking stalls are identified on the parking plan currently. City code would allow up to 712 parking spaces, so less parking. Staff, however, does support the request. We feel that it's minor in nature. And Park Nicollet stated that this number would meet their demand and meet their needs. There's still a little bit unknown about the parking. However, staff feels that this provides some flexibility. The reason I say there's some unknown, typically with medical office building, if you look at our, our city code, it talks about the doctor and patient ratio. And so since we don't know how many doctors necessarily will be in this facility and the full build-out's not quite complete, we use a standard number for office and feel that's within, within reason. There are a number of planning and development benefits. One, this proposal brings overall master plan in greater conformance and, and nearer completion to that 1974 plan. The medical office will bring additional employment, not only during construction, but when the building's complete. Proposed grading will help facilitate additional soil that will be moved to the city archery site. There's a number of amenities throughout the site, including those decorative ballards, the colored concrete, native landscaping, year-round color for the landscaping, bike parking, and future location for public art as well. There's the bike enclosure that's pretty unique, that is identified for Park Nicollet staff. Park Nicollet also has a commitment to sustainability, environmental sustainability. The roof will be built so that it's solar-ready and they're proposing to roughen for electric charging stations within their parking garage. The proposed landscaping exceeds our landscaping requirements and the 2004 planning and development approval. With that, staff does recommend approval of the project. There are 10 conditions. I can certainly run through them too. If you want to discuss any of the conditions or have any questions regarding the project, I can certainly stand for those. Again, the applicant is available as well as their architect and engineer as well if there's any further questions and details about the project.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Dean. That was a very thorough presentation. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff on this application? No questions? Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The background information provided us is very extensive and there's a lot of materials there. I think I read with interest that Park Nicollet is also providing a rough-in for charging, electrical charging of vehicles in the parking lot, which is very interesting and new. So I appreciate that. Do you would like, like to say a little bit about that?
So the city definitely sees that as a benefit. And whenever a project applicant comes in and, and they have a proposal and especially when they're asking for any deviations from code, staff sees that as an opportunity to, to evaluate the project and to request things that are, have been identified by our policymakers, maybe have been identified in our comprehensive plan or identified in, in our, even in our architectural design checklist that we have. And so in this case, staff did highlight, you know, things like parking and commitment to environmental sustainability. And, and Park Nicollet said, yeah, we, we do that, we, we can do that here. So we certainly see that as a staff, as a benefit to the city, benefit to the project, a benefit to their, their customers. And we're certainly excited to see that commitment followed through.
Yeah, I think I, I saw it as a, as a positive too and it's neat that it encourages people to use electrical vehicles. to use electrical vehicles. If I may, Mr. Chair, the traffic situation I'm concerned about because with the addition of this with Park Nicollet, Nicollet Avenue and Fairview Drive will be, will be busy. I know that you said, based on the traffic study which we did a few years ago, that with this one, with the addition of Park Nicollet, there'll be a follow-up traffic study. You have any idea how long, how, when that will take place, say two years after or what?
It, it depends on Park Nicollet's timing, on when they would like to pursue the next phase. I'd certainly, you know, invite them up to see if that's something that's in, in the works. Is it a, you know, a three-year thing? Is it a five, 10-year? They can better answer that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Bradrick?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Dean, in reference to the height of the building, we're well within the PUD allowed, but we're, I, I just want to make sure we're, we're well below the fifth and sixth floor that we passed several years ago. I think it was '05 for Fairview Ridge's, so we're, we're still, our height standpoint is, is far below other buildings in the, in the area.
It, it would be.
Okay. And then Chair, one more question. I guess this is the first, I'm assuming this has been in code and I've, I've missed it. I've never had it brought up that an applicant is asking for a deviation for more parking spaces than what's allowed. And that's a little confusing to me from the standpoint of they're putting in a parking ramp and they're exceeding the green space. Once again, I guess, help me with, is that something we need to look at down the road so we don't burden further applicants? It seems like if they meet their green space and stormwater management, a max of parking stalls seems a little odd. What, what's the reasoning for that?
Deb's raising her hand over there.
Yes, yes, Ms. Garrett. Thanks for answering my question.
Thank you. Yes, we can address this. The city, a number of years ago, did a parking study and we know that in, throughout Burnsville, we have a lot of excess parking. So we did add some maximum parking standards to try to lessen that because what happens is, and some of the commissioners may recall, the city spent a lot of money going back to the stormwater management for like the Burnsville Shopping Center to try to deal with all of that excess pavement, remove it, bring in new stormwater ponds, et cetera. So that's why there are some excess parking standards, you know, to try to limit that. It's not something that it, that can't be modified, but that's what the, that's what the requirements are set to do. We do anticipate also doing another parking study next year to take a look at overall parking standards that we have, but it's primarily intended to promote the most amount of green space or permeable area possible within the city.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick. I have a similar question. I'm more accustomed to the inverse rather than what we have here with parking. Are there any questions from the applicant, from the commission? No questions. If the applicant's here, if you want, you can come up and, and speak to this and give us kind of your background on it. And if you could give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Chris Leidman, Director of Engineering for Park Nicollet Health Services. Address 6500 Excelsior Boulevard in St. Louis Park.
There's no questions, but I don't, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about your project.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Workman and members of the commission. Thank you for hearing our project this evening. Ms. Dean, thank you for your presentation. Park Nicollet has, has enjoyed a partnership with the greater Burnsville community. And I say even beyond Burnsville from the standpoint that we provide specialty care for the surrounding communities as well for over three decades. And we serve up to 1,500 patients a day at this clinic. It's a highly utilized building, the existing facility. We are excited at the prospect of, of being able to serve the community even better with, with broader services and better patient experience.
Well, I think we'll share our opinions after the public hearing and I appreciate you giving us a little bit of a insight into that.
Thank you.
With that, I will open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak to this item, you're welcome to join at the podium and give us your name and address for the record. And if there is nobody, I will close the public hearing and turn it back over to the commission for any more questions, discussion, or motion on this item. Commissioners? Commissioner Bradrick?
Thank you, Chair. I'm excited. I would be in support of this application this evening. I'm, we very seldom get as many pluses as we were presented with this application from the standpoint of working with us on moving soil. We, we used, when the first phase was done, we moved a fair amount of soil to solve a couple of problems in the city. It's exciting that we're bringing the jobs to the city. It's a beautiful, beautiful addition. The, the construction jobs and then plus being able to serve the community. So we're excited, I'm excited that, that Park Nicollet's going to expand in the city. I do know when we first did the Fairview addition that there was some concerns and I do remember a fair amount of kind of step processes down the road to handle traffic as it's needed. Fairview was, was designed an appropriate spot for possible things. And then this particular access out on the Nicollet is new, which we didn't have before. So I, I do believe that'll, that'll be an assistance and I, I'm pretty sure that we've covered most of the traffic concerns with the original change to the PUD for, for the Fairview piece. So it's exciting to see this total campus be a little closer to being completely developed. So I would be in support of this application this evening, Chair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to second what Commissioner Bradrick has just said. Very rarely do we get an application as complete as the one we have here. Then I would like to commend the applicant, Park Nicollet, and the staff working together. It just shows that working together, how much we can achieve and it makes it easier for all of us. The, the building, as you see the, the coloration of the building and even the, the three stories, at one end is just one story and then the other end is three stories. It's, it's unique and I think it, this building and the services provided by this organization will add so much more to Burnsville. Personally, as a longtime resident of Burnsville, I appreciate this. Oftentimes I was asked, what has happened to that piece of land near to Fairview? And even though I knew a little bit about the, what came up before us years ago that they were going to do something and, and put up a building there, you know, it's difficult to share that with people. But I'm, I'm very, very happy that this is being, getting done. I'm glad that Burnsville is expanding, Park Nicollet is expanding in Burnsville and I wish you guys all the best. Thanks for a great job, staff and the applicant. And I will be supporting this application.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Walter, the floor is yours.
I would just echo what, with both, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll echo what both Commissioners Bradrick and Singh have said already and I'm, I would like to make a motion.
The floor is yours.
If you would accept it. I move that the Planning Commission recommend the City Council approval of Park Nicollet Clinic for preliminary and final plat of Ridge's 13th addition, rezoning lots 1, 2, 3, Block 3, Nicollet Terrace from mixed, mixed-use to mixed PUD, mixed-use planned unit development and planned unit development amendment for modification of existing clinic and removal of parking structure to allow for the construction of a new 80,000 square foot clinic and parking ramp located at 14,000 Fairview Drive, subject to the 10, 10 conditions listed on the document.
Mr. Chair, it's my honor and privilege to second the motion. So able to move by Commissioner Walter.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you for bringing a great application and a beautiful building to Burnsville and we wish you the best of luck on this. And it will go into the City Council on June 19th at 5:30 PM. Our next item on this evening's agenda is a public hearing for borrowers' companies for a preliminary plat, a zoning amendment from B1 to B1 PUD and concept and development stage PUD for a 134-unit senior living building and concept stage PUD, 15,000 square foot medical office building located southeast of Grand Avenue and north of 145th Street East. And Ms. Regina Dean is presenting this item as well.
Good evening, Chair. Commissioner again. So this property is located east, southeast of I-35E, south of County Road 42, north of 145th Street. There is the Frontage Road Grand, which is on the north as well. The site is guided BUS, which is business office retail and is currently zoned B1. The property does consist of an unplanted parcel of land, so a preliminary plat is part of this request. The applicant, if this is approved, will have to come back for a final plat. That will be a separate application and process. Just a note on that. This is an aerial photo of the surrounding area. We do have R1 PUD to the south. We have the vacant couple of parcels to the south as well. Those are guided BUS or business zone B1. The single-family to the south is guided low-density residential. To the east, we have church that is zone B1 and guided low-density residential. And then to the north, north of County Road 42, we have business and B3 PUD. Site history, so in 2004, the city approved a 30,000 square foot office building as well as four stories of mixed use, which included apartments and condos and retail. It was primarily four-story. A portion of the, the building was T-shaped and a portion of that four-story stepped back. So you had kind of a combination, three-story, four-story building. In 2006, the city rescinded those approvals because there was no movement and development and the, the con, or the city changed it from B1 PUD back to PUD, I mean, back to B1. From B1, sorry, let me go over that again. From B1 PUD to back to B1. So there's no planning at development over it. That approval went away essentially. In 2018, just a couple of months ago, the applicant brought forward a sketch plan to City Council showing a three-story senior living building, approximately 130 units, along with a medical office building, very similar to what you see as part of your application today. The, there was general support at that time for the request. Part of the reason it went to sketch plan was because City Council had a policy that talked about an EAW being required for senior or for housing apartments if over a certain number. And the City Council also, or, or the city zoning code talks about the assisted living and memory care being a permitted use through a conditional use permit. However, the senior active living is not allowed within B1. So the applicant was checking two things with council from a policy standpoint. Would you support this project going forward without potential EAW, which is, was a city-driven policy request, not an EAW threshold, it's not a state threshold requirement? And two, would the city generally be in support of active senior living on this property? Because again, it's something that isn't permitted by right. You'd have to ask for a planning and development. There was general support for that request at that time.
Chair, I'm sorry, could I, I, I just, I want to clarify something because I'm confused on something with what was just said. On the slide in front of us, it says general support for the sketch plan for a three-story. The background that I pulled from the City Council stated that they were in supportive of a four-story.
I don't have that background in front of me.
Okay.
I don't have the minutes in front of me. I, I'm not sure.
I do.
Okay.
I pulled the legal minutes off the website for, for that. I can, I can provide that.
For clarification, it was three-story that was presented, but they said they were in support to go to four-story?
Um, I, I pulled the presentation from the, from the applicant and I'm sure that we can get to this. I read it as they proposed a four-story and the City Council was supportive of a four-story.
I'm sorry.
We can cer, we can certainly clarify that.
I have a error in my slide. It should say four-story. I apologize. That should say four, four-story. You're right. Thank you for that.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, Chair.
No, thank you.
Yes, so the slide should say four-story. My mistake. So we'll go back. Site plan. The overall proposal's just over six acres in size. There is a portion that's proposed to be dedicated to the city, city right-of-way. Because it is an unplatted parcel of land, this portion will eventually, if approved, be dedicated to the city. There are additional parcels on the, this little triangle on the west portion of the property is also part of that proposal. The proposal will be for two lots. So we have Lot 1, which is a senior site, and then proposed Lot 2, which is the medical office. The proposed should say 134-unit, three, four-story senior living facility on Lot 1, and then the 15,000 square foot medical, one-story on the west portion of the property. Total number of parking spaces proposed on Lot 1 is 150 parking spaces, approximately fifty, fifty, five-zero, surface parking stalls and approximately 100 underground. Seventy-two parking stalls are proposed on Lot 2, which is the medical office. I should note that the medical office is conceptual at this point. Elevations were not provided for that proposal. So that will have to come in later depending on if any deviations from city code are, if any deviations from city code are proposed, it may or may not trigger a planned unit development. So if at some point the applicant comes in and it meets all city code requirements, it may not have to come back through a process. Proposed grading plan, there are two infiltration basins, proposed south portion of the property and the west portion of the property. And then again with grading, we do have our staff engineer available to answer any specific questions regarding that. Proposed landscaping plan, there are the building perimeter landscaping as well as buffering along the south portion of the property that's proposed. City staff is asking that additional conifer trees are planted along the south portion of the property for two reasons. One, because the, we have a landscape mix that's required for proposals and they're not meeting the tree requirement mix for one of the categories, also for additional screening purposes. So staff feels not only will they meet some additional screen that might help screen with the neighborhood, but then also they would meet the city code requirement. Again, with the proposed Again, with the proposed lot two, the medical office building, staff recommends that they meet code requirements in the future, and if any changes in the future that don't meet city code, they may have to come back through a process. With the senior building, again, there is underground parking that's proposed. Level one of the senior building primarily consists of cafeteria, lobby space, offices, kitchen facility, fitness area, spa for the residents' guests, as well as a memory care wing on that, the north portion identified in blue. And then a mix of senior active living as well as assisted living. Second floor, mainly a mix of the residential units, the active or assisted living. Some community room space identified in yellow. Third floor, more of the mix of the active senior assisted living. And I don't have the fourth. Perhaps our applicant may have a copy of that with them, I'm hoping for.
It was in our background.
Okay, thank you. The, this just gives you a perspective view of the proposed entry, port of crochere. This would be a view looking, if you're standing, looking east. And then the elevations. Primary elevations, the buildings have lap siding. There is a small portion of the building near the front entry that does have cultured stone. The proposal does not meet our city code requirement as far as exterior materials on each elevation. There is a deviation request to increase the lap siding shake or five percent siding from fifty percent to seventy to seventy-five percent of the building. Staff is asking for application of more of the higher quality materials such as brick or cultured stone. And we're asking as a staff that that be amended prior to building permit, again, should this be recommended for approval. The proposal does include a pitched roof. That was something that was highlighted by the City Council as desirable when the elevations were showed at that work session. It does provide a transition between that single-family or low-density residential to the south to, and as well as the neighboring properties. Even though it is a somewhat commercial in nature, it does help to provide that transition. Just more perspectives of the building. Going to go back to the site plan. So the entry to the underground garage is located on this southwest corner of the building. That's where any loading for trash and recycling would occur as well. It's all proposed to be housed underground and be pulled out during pickup days. There is also a generator that's proposed to be screened with the wall as well. But again, heavily landscaped on that south portion of the property. There are a number of deviations that are requested, or I shouldn't say a number, there's a handful of deviations that are requested. The first deviation that's requested is zero lot line deviation along the common lot line between lots one and two. That's pretty common in a situation where you have joint or shared parking, and staff is in support of that as long as there is a joint parking maintenance and cross access agreement recorded on both lots. There is a deviation for parking along the north portion of the property. I can point that out right now. Generally within this area. Staff has requested that either, one, the parking be revised to meet codes. It could be removed if parking can be satisfied within the site. Or a benefit to the city for deviations requested could include that the stalls are housed with electric vehicle charging stations or previous pavement. Those could be looked at as benefits, and those were suggested by staff. There is a deviation request to allow the additional siding. City code does not support this deviation. We're requesting that they're in keeping with our B-one requirements, and that no greater than fifty percent of the building is lap siding. And it could be that the plans are revised to include that additional brick or cultured stone, for example. Deviations requested to allow a four-story, again, my apologies from before, to allow the four-story building up to fifty-one feet in height. Similar to the Park Nicklet building, which we saw before, the max in this zoning district is twenty-five feet. However, with approval of a conditional use permit, or in this case, a planning at development, you can approve taller than twenty-five feet. Staff is in support of the deviation request. And then as mentioned before, there is a deviation request for landscape diversity. You're required to meet four of the landscape diversity kind of checkboxes. The applicant meets two, however, I'm sorry, you need to meet three of the four. However, the applicant can meet the three checkboxes if they plant the additional conifer trees as staff suggests. So again, meeting some additional screening that will help buffer with the neighbors to the south, but then also bring them into compliance with that code requirement. There are benefits to approving this planning at development. One, the proposals in similar scale to that two thousand and four approval, although that was rescinded, it, it was something that was fully approved. The proposal will help increase the city's tax base. It will allow existing Burnsville residents to age in place, to age and live within the city of Burnsville still. Roars Companies did a study and identified through their study, a market study, that city of Burnsville needs additional senior housing units. So it would bring us closer to the need that they had identified within the market study. And then the combination of medical office, memory care, and assisted living will bring additional employment to the area. So there will be staff on-site to assist with those, with those needs. Just wanted to note this, role of the planning commission is to review the technical aspects of the planning at development as it relates to the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. Medical services, clinics are permitted use. Nursing, assisted living, and health care is permitted with a conditional use, in this case, a planning at development. And then the independent active senior does require a planning at development, but staff feels that approval through the planning at development, it would be in keeping with the comprehensive plan. I may have misspoke, medical services and clinic is permitted within the B-one by right. With that, staff does recommend approval of the four-story, one hundred and thirty-four unit senior living office building, and then conceptual approval for that fifteen thousand square foot medical office building, subject to the conditions listed in the recommendations. Certainly, if you have any questions regarding the specific recommendations or anything that I neglected to point out, I'd be more than happy to stand for questions. Otherwise, the applicant and the, their representatives are also in the audience to help fill in any blanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, questions for staff on this application? Commissioner Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Dean, and this might be an engineering question as well. I just have a infiltration basin. Is there a difference, I mean, is that a pond basically, or is it a different, it's a little more technical term than I think we've seen and I've noticed in the past.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, there, there is a difference. Infiltration basin, we are trying to have some of the water soak into the ground, so we are not sending it all to ponds, you know, to essentially sit and, and have to evaporate, things like that. So there, there is a difference. The city does have an infiltration requirement that we try to meet unless we're in a zone where it's not allowed. So in this case, they are meeting or exceeding their, their volume requirements for infiltration with this project. There, there will be a portion of, of the project that may have wet ponding, but ultimately, what does not infiltrate will get into storm sewer, and then it will also route to a nearby wetland where it goes to the north now, so. But there is a difference.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions for staff? Any questions for the applicant?
I, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, I would, I would, I got it.
Commissioner, sir.
When the applicant is up.
Okay. Commissioner Reg, do you have a question for staff?
Yes, I would. I, I have a couple of recommendations I'd like to clarify.
Okay.
Number four, the applicant shall revise plans to, I'd like to kind of know exactly what we're talking about. The applicant shall revise plans to extend the private sidewalks to connect the memory care garden and the outdoor dining patio prior to, was, was this for a safety reason, or why are we asking for that?
Steph saw this as an additional benefit to the site to connect, help connect the spaces. I do know the applicant does have questions about this and may raise them later.
And then, number three, the applicant shall revise exterior elevations to meet to twenty-five percent glazing. There was some information in our background that the applicant was willing to work with this. Is there an update with where that is? Is it, are we as presented, or what's the?
I believe they're just under that twenty-five percent at twenty, like twenty-four point eight or nine percent. I don't have revised elevations at this point, but it's my understanding that the architect was willing to increase that to meet the twenty-five by doing some bow or bay windows on some of the locations.
Okay.
And again, the applicant can speak further to that if there's further question.
Yeah, and I think, Chair, the rest of my questions could be directed to the applicant.
Okay. I just have a quick question for staff. With the soils that would be removed from this, is, is there any issues with that soil, or would that be stored off-site similar to what the Park Nicklet development is?
Can you further answer, Brian?
Mr. Commissioner and Chair, this is, this is, you know, it's really a private development issue as far as what they do with their excess dirt, so we don't try to get into that level of coordinating. There was no environmental concerns out there where we would have had to evaluate soils to make sure, you know, that something special had to be done. So really, it's up to the developer. I mean, they might be able to comment, they might have somewhere for additional dirt to go, or they, they might, they might even be short on the site and have to haul dirt in. So again, we just, we kind of leave that, that up to them. Unless, of course, we need dirt for an archery site. Then we'll take it.
Just seems like with the few green spaces we have left, this always soil or topography. With that, I would ask the applicant to come up and we'll ask a couple of questions, whoever's representing the applicant, whoever drew the short straw. If you could just give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Jeff Cook. I'm a partner with Roars Companies. Address is two-ten Queensland Lane North in Plymouth, Minnesota.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. We'll just start with a couple of questions that came out of the gate, if there was, or I can hand it over to Commissioner Bradrick. Some questions on some of the recommendations related to number three, the glazing, and number four, with the private sidewalk. If you would like, I can repeat those.
Yeah, number three, the glazing component, Regina hit it on the head. We're at twenty-four point eight or nine, and so our architect, Cos Wilson, said they can revise the openings of the windows to accommodate more glazing on the facade of the building. So there's not a concern in meeting that. In terms of the connectivity from the memory care wing to the patio behind the building, from an operation standpoint, it, it doesn't make sense because memory care, the main intent is to keep our patients contained and keep track of them due to the nature of them being in a memory care wing. So we encourage them to walk, but not just walk out by themselves from one side to the other, because we have wander guard systems and whatnot to keep track of our patients. So that, that's the feedback that I'd give there.
Okay. I guess it'll serve with Commissioner Bradrick if you want to.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, I thought that might be the case. I, from, full disclosure, I, I did spend some time and I drove around your facility in Richfield today, so I kind of know, because there was some comparisons there. So there's some questions about brick, and you did kind of base the building in Richfield in brick, and can you help us what, your decision to not do any brick, or help me with where we're at with the exterior finishes that I figured might be an issue?
Yeah, so primarily, brick is anywhere from three to four times more expensive, so part of it is just tastefully putting it in, in key locations, so we're generally open to adding brick in, in certain components to get more change in the facade, but just to set it at twenty-five or fifty percent brick, that's a significant cost increase. So we're willing to work with staff, it's just kind of finding a medium in-between there of what the end goal is, so.
And that same question would be with, and this, Ms. Dean might be a staff, both in our renderings for the current building and for the building in Richfield, there's a fair amount of lap siding, but there's also board and batten. And are we, are we calling the board and batten lap siding, or?
Yeah, so fiber cement boards, lap siding, any type of really siding application such as this would be in that kind of other category where there's the max fifty percent, unless it's manufactured off-site in like large panels and brought to the facility. So if you're doing kind of individual application, similar to like in a single-family home, that, that's capped at the fifty percent. But if you're bringing in, like, bringing in the whole like side of the building almost at one time and, and craning that in, then that can go above the fifty percent threshold and not trigger a waiver or deviation from code.
And then lastly, the question about the parking stalls? That's simply just because of a access or how close we are to the property line?
Correct, that deviation request, correct.
Okay.
There's a thirty-foot setback requirement for front, front yards.
I'll probably have some more questions, Chair, but I, I do have a, if we could, I don't mean to bounce around, but from a landscaping standpoint, we did have some information in our background about the retention pond, and maybe, Brian, you can help with this also. So I'll, I'll broaden this as much as I can. There was a comparison to the retention pond that's about a block and a half to the east, and I did spend some time looking at that, and it is not typical to what we see in the city from a standpoint of how it's been planted. I have retention ponds that the city owns near my home that are fully landscaped, and I assumed part of that was part of the process of the pond. And maybe the pond that's being referenced in our background just hasn't been completed. But from a standpoint of landscaping and how the retention ponds will look, can you help me with that a little bit? help me with that a little bit?
Just what kind of vegetations are around there?
Are they well landscaped?
I think there was a comment from one of the residents about the Breen Baptist proposal and the look of those ponds and the concern that it might look the same. I have not seen what the Breen Baptist pond looks like and from an aesthetic quality, so unfortunately, I can't make that comparison.
I can help answer it. I mean, again, from the ponding perspective itself, we typically don't like to see plants planted below the high water level of the pond unless, you know, unless it happens to be a plant that is, you know, valued as infiltrating or soaking up materials, which naturally happens in a wetland on its own. So, really, any of the landscaping that happens outside of that high water level really is an aesthetic thing for the most part, so we typically fall back to the planning side of things. And so, I mean, if there is requests to change, or I know that Regina had looked through things and gone over it, but we would, what's on the proposed plan is what's being proposed, and it does not impact the nature of the pond or what the pond will do.
Okay. What I saw at Breen is not typical for what I see in the city, so that just made me.
Yeah, and I'll just add one more thing. With an infiltration basin, we do see different types of plantings within infiltration basins, again, with the whole purpose to soak up that water that goes into there. So, you will see different plants with that, but they're typically natural wetland grasses and flowers, things that, like that with deep rooting systems, not willow trees or whatever.
None of that's in place today, so maybe they're just in a stage that that has not been completed.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I just had that question. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradrick. Any other questions from the Commission for the applicant? Commissioner Singh, so his name. I don't think we'll be done. We'll probably have some more questions after the public hearing. Actually, before we let you go, it seems like one of the bigger concerns within the public comments is the traffic, and we didn't get a whole lot into that from the staff report, but could you just talk a little bit about the traffic studies and what you guys have done considering that?
Yep. So, we conducted an initial study with Wink Engineering Consultants just to kind of get a baseline of what we think the traffic impact will be to the area. Staff wanted, requested more information due to our initial public meeting with the neighborhood, and so we did a little bit more in-depth study for the traffic. And basically, we took it, sorry, I'm just pulling up the traffic numbers here just to specifically. So, we did, we ran two scenarios. One is a scenario with our senior living community with the medical office building, and the other is basically building a two-story medical office use building as of right. And so, we conducted those two scenarios, and it's laid out, and so, what they came up with was a weekly, weekday daily total of five hundred and thirty cars per day. To compare that against a scenario of a two-story medical office building approved as of right under B-one zoning, they generate two thousand two hundred and sixty-two trips per day, and so, that just highlights the significance that our proposal is much less traffic impact versus building a medical office building, which is approved under the B-one zoning. The engineering comments from the city, one hundred and forty-fifth Street has, was designed to hold anywhere from eight to ten thousand cars per day. Right now, the use is at around two thousand to twenty-two hundred trips per day, and so, to add five hundred and thirty trips per day with our development is not going to bring you anywhere near the max capacity, so there's additional capacity on one hundred and forty-fifth Street.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. We will move to the public hearing, and like I said, we might have some additional questions right after that if anything new comes up from that process.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will open the public hearing, and we do have a sign-in sheet from the lobby, and it looks like John Donovan was our only person to sign that sheet, so.
There's a sheet out there. Do we need to run?
Anybody can come up, but they get to go first because they signed in, so. But if I.
He was with Park Nicklet.
Ah, well, then John is already done speaking, so anybody that would like to speak to this can come up and give us your name and address for the record, and it is open.
Good evening. My name is Mary Katie, and I live at one-four-five-zero-two Chateau Court, Burnsville, five-five-three-oh-six. Our home is the one directly across one hundred and forty-fifth Street from the proposed development, and our one-story home is the home closest to the south wing of the four-story proposed building. I have two issues to comment on. First, I strongly ask that you stay firm on your recommendation to not allow seventy-four percent of the total facade of the Roar's senior building to be fiber cement siding. The staff recommendation that brick or stone be increased at the basin sites of the building to meet city code is essential. This building is very plain and not all that attrac, excuse me, not all that attractive, especially from the street side where our single-family homes are, so to at least meet city code could help mitigate that negative quality. Secondly, I question why the height is not being limited to three stories as it was in the B-one PUD in two thousand and four. It would not be appropriate to make this decision to allow four stories to be based on whether the developer believes it can be profitable for them. Instead of the need for a four-story structure, it may reflect overpricing on the cost of the land. The site, of course, is zoned B-one, which allows twenty-five feet or less in height, if I understand correctly. The proposal's for fifty-one-foot-high building, which is twice as high as we have come to expect in the twenty years we've been living there. As residents like myself have noted, this is a significant deviation when built across a narrow street from single-family homes that are one-story. I would ask you to strongly reconsider your recommendation of four stories and instead recommend three stories, at least on that south wing of the building that directly parallels our homes on one hundred and forty-fifth Street from Chateau Court and Chateau Lane. Such a step up in height from three stories to four stories was the solution recommended by the Planning Commission and approved by the City Council in two thousand and four. It seems to be as viable a solution today as it was then. Please reevaluate your decision. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. It's all you.
Is there a possibility of putting that colored thing showing site as well as a marker? Do you have that all on your screens? Is what's on your screen on everybody else?
Yep, and same with this screen above you.
Let me.
And if I could have a pointer?
Are you wanting this?
Oh, there is a color thing that you showed, and it had site, and.
Was it the rendering of the site, the?
Yeah, yeah, just the general schematic.
I think the elevation.
Anyway, it's the beginning. My name is David Laubie. I live at fourteen-five-twenty Chateau Lane, and happy to be in front of you, gentlemen and ladies. I've never done something like this before. In any event, this property visually and topographically, I see just about every day because I live in Chateau Lane, and I walk around there, past it, or up around Breen and then around the corner. In any event, yeah, there we go. Is there anything I can use to?
If you want, you can, why don't you step over here?
Yeah.
So, I have the mouse, and they can see.
Yeah, good.
They can see the arrow there, so if you want to take over.
No, I'm not as young as you. I'm not quite as tech savvy as.
Well, we'll have to point out, then, the areas that you want.
No, no, I can see it now.
Okay, okay.
I mean, yeah. In any event, I won't bore you, gentlemen and ladies. I just have two or three simple questions, and then I got a couple of concerns, and then a possible suggestion or perhaps solutions to some concerns. First of all, the questions. I noticed after our last meeting, not your meeting, but where we appeared with those folks at the Lutheran Church, and then there was a cable that was put up on one forty-fifth. Those things that you lay out on the street, do those count just the number of vehicles that go by, or the speed which would they go by, or both?
They can be both. I don't know, I'm not aware of that traffic study that was done. It was probably.
Well, we noticed it right after the meeting.
Yeah, it likely was something done as a part of the traffic study.
Right, okay. Yeah, we knew it didn't just happen by chance. The other thing is, has there been any study by the folks at Roars or any of the city beforehand as far as the entrance, entrances both on Grand Avenue and one forty-fifth, which has the most traffic, one forty-fifth or Grand? As far as traffic count or however you measure it, I suppose traffic count. Reason why I'm asking is, and this ties in with my third question, and that has to do with, is there anything in the city code that prohibits emergency vehicles, ambulance, fire truck, et cetera, cop cars, from coming in and then circling around and then going out the same exit that they come in at? Is there anything that forbids that in the city? Which would, why I ask that is because, living at Chateau Lane, we're a little anxious about the exit, entrance, exit, driveway on Chateau Lane, which, or on the site, which directly, as you can see on, we're Chateau Lane, here's Chateau Lane, right? Right there where the mouse is, where the entrance, exit, driveway to the proposed site, and Chateau Lane are just right across the street, right across one forty-fifth from each other, and to me, there's going to be some traffic congestions there with one forty-fifth, and I'll get into why in a minute, as well as the two driveways coming right out, meeting each other. And why I say that is, you can ask anybody on Chateau Lane, including my wife, where we're coming out of Chateau Lane, and we turn, and there's some car speeding up right behind us there, coming up around from the left, heading eastward, that there have been a few close misses, and fortunately, no fender benders yet, but where we just turn on to one forty-fifth, and then all of a sudden, a rearview mirror, we see somebody right on our tail who's slowing down very quickly. So, I can see not only from Chateau, but if there's another one coming out from the proposed site, especially if Chateau's turning one way and they're turning another way or something, the traffic coming by there. The speed is the main thing. The car count, yeah, okay, whatever that is compared to whatever it proposed to be, I understand, but the speed. And so, with those questions, I just have a couple of concerns. First of all, as has already been mentioned, having a four-story structure right across the street from single-family Chateau Association, as well as what that siding would look like on the four-story structure. But of more safety concerns, that's just visual. Okay, we understand that. Safety part has to do with traffic on one forty-fifth, if this proposal is allowed to proceed with an entrance on one forty-fifth, instead of what I might suggest, one entrance on Grand Avenue, which I think is far less traffic with the entrance unless there is something that forbid it on the city ordinance, where entrance and emergency vehicles could enter and exit at the same place instead of having two exits, two entrances, one on one hundred and forty-fifth and the other one on Grand Avenue. As far as, that's the visual concern, that's as far as the traffic concern, it has to do with one forty-fifth, and as far as remedying, mitigating the circumstance of traffic, speed mainly, and that is the speed limit along, where's my mouse? Here we are. The speed limit along here is thirty-five, as you may know, and coming up suddenly upon what's going to be an intersection, if the proposal goes, that's too fast. I would suggest a twenty-five limit be posted right where the thirty-five limit is, up around here, particularly as you can see with this big curving, you know, one forty-fifth, and then it comes on to Grand here, because there's where Grand hooks up. And with those curves, when somebody, human nature being what it is, if the sign says thirty-five, there's some people that are exceeding that. You know that, and whether it's five over or whatever it is. And particularly coming around that curve, that's why there can be a little concern when we get down here to Chateau Lane, especially if it's right in here with their entrance and our entrance as well. So, I'd suggest speed limit reduced to twenty-five, and in particular, if it was possible, one of those flashing twenty-five signs like you see, and where it just draws more attention with those, you know, with the flashing part. Some of us at Chateau Association had thought, oh, well, maybe for traffic mitigation, if this proposal goes through, plus, it doesn't have anything to do with this Roar's proposal, but it does for us at Chateau, if that proposal that was put forth last year, with a huge development to the south of Chateau, just north of South Cross, and just east of Grand Avenue, that big one, that's going to really increase the traffic for Chateau. Now, that's no fault of Roar's, but that here again. And so, some of us at Chateau had thought, hmm, would the city be willing to put a roundabout right in there? That would slow things down a little bit with the twenty, and, but that costs money. And I understand, everybody works on a budget, you guys do too, we all do, and so, my thought might be to save the city some money and maybe mitigate traffic even better at a much lower cost, having stop signs, where's my mouse? Stop signs right here and right here on either side of one forty-fifth of this, what's going to be the entrances for both the new site and for what already is the entrance for Chateau Lane. Some of those flashing stop signs with the red dots around it, just like you see, well, the only one I can think of offhand is down on Lack Lavon just before you hit the park. Boy, you don't, that gets your attention, especially at night, and especially at night here if people are coming out of this new facility, as well as Chateau, as well as the Monday night or the Wednesday night people coming this way from Breen Church, that flashing sign, and that wouldn't cost the city very much, and that would, now, somebody would say, well, that impedes through traffic. Well, not necessarily. If there's something, if there's a car coming on one forty-fifth on either direction, and somebody's waiting to come out of the new site or Chateau, well, yeah, sure, stop, you know, but as we all know, human nature being what it is, if there's a stop sign, flashing or otherwise, and there's nothing coming from either direction, in the old days, we called it a four-wheel rolling stop, but at least it slows them down, right? They don't have to come, a complete stop, but yeah, they'll slow down, and even better, slow. better, slow them down than if we have a roundabout up there at the corner of Grand and one forty-fifth. So, that's, I guess, what I really wanted to say, suggest that if you guys do approve this site, and I have nothing against Roars, I commend them for their entrepreneurial spirit. And I know it's good for the city. I mean, better tax base and better jobs, it's more, you know, employment, rather than have that vacant lot sitting there. No, I, I understand econ one oh one perfectly well. And so, I'm just saying, if we all give just a little bit, the city, Roars and Chateau, I think we can all live together okay, but with some of this traffic remediation that I don't think would cost very much, but I think would solve a problem, which is our main concern, at least with mine at Chateau, is the traffic. And so, there may be other folks want to say something, and there may be somebody from Roars want to counteract what I just said, but I'm sure willing to listen. And so, I'll shut up and that's all I got to say for now, gentlemen and lady.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lobby. Anybody else like to speak during the public hearing?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Joan Cooksey and I live at fourteen five ten Chateau Court, Burnsville, Minnesota. And one of my main concerns is traffic as well. And I do understand that the applicant completed a trip generation analysis along with the city. They hired a consultant, Wink, I believe. Five hundred and thirty additional weekday trips may not be a lot for them or for many people, but that's our neighborhood. And it's a concern, safety concern, and five hundred and thirty more cars just for the senior living, what will happen if we have the medical building in there as well? There's going to be additional cars as well. The proposed four-story building, you know, obviously we wish it was three stories. Staff support, the four-story building, your neighbors weren't asked, and we're letting you know that. Looking out our window at a four-story building isn't why we purchased our homes in Burnsville. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to?
Good evening. My name is Mary Jo Palaranta and I live at one four five zero zero Chateau Lane. Our driveway happens, we're on the corner of Chateau Lane and one hundred and forty-fifth, so our driveway will be directly across from the proposed driveway for the new development. And I do question that. I was told by Regina that, that is typical of Burnsville to put driveways to match each other. Is that always, is my question? Do you have an answer to that?
I, there's a lot of development in Burnsville. I can't say that it's always been the case. Each case is certainly unique.
I would say that driveway for the property, for the proposed property will be the common one because that's on the way to the underground parking. So, there is another way they can come in, but I think most people will probably come in that way in order to get to their garage space underneath. So, I'm asking your thought on that and your expertise, what you think about that. Do I understand about the exterior material that the deviation is going to be not supported by the staff?
And maybe Chair, because it's a public hearing and these are comments, I probably shouldn't be addressing.
Okay, yeah. Did that what I heard?
You can, yeah, well, as the background states right now, staff's not supportive of the current.
Okay, good. I just wanted to know that. And then, didn't quite understand, the same with the trash and was it air conditioning or some units that are going to be there that's outside, is that going to be screened?
There were some screening requirements in the back, in our recommendation.
Was there? Okay.
Give me one second here. Which one was the screening?
And Chair, I don't know if you perhaps wanted to maybe take all of her comments and maybe address them at the end.
Yeah, we'll continue to.
Yeah, okay, great. That's fine. And then, the other thing that I had was, I think I'm hearing, I hope I heard, that the, what we heard at our community meeting with the group, that more, more trees are being added to the proposal. Think I heard that, I hope I heard that. So, that was just some of my questions I'd like to have clarified if, if I could from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you just get all those so we can clarify that afterwards? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Dan Moran, M O R A N, one four five zero nine, Chateau Lane, excuse me. I would just like to suggest that any traffic analysis, take into account the probably twenty-acre lot to the left of this proposed development where there is another proposal underway for about three hundred and forty or more units. And that will really saturate it. So, please don't consider just this proposal without taking into consideration what possibly could be coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak to the site on this evening? Okay, seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. And we had some questions. Regina, speaking to just a couple of the questions from Ms. Palaranta's about the screening, we did have, I was just struggling to find it quickly, but we had screening requirements in the background for the HVAC units and the garbage.
There is additional screening, screening, I believe, concrete masonry unit wall for the generator, as well as from the point of application to, there was a neighborhood meeting, some of the comments from the neighbors were a request to add additional landscaping. After that meeting, the applicant did add more landscaping to the south portion of the building. And then, as part of staff's recommendation, we're asking for the, those six additional conifer trees at six feet in height as well. So, that answers the question.
Okay. We've got those questions, the rest of these statements. I do want to clarify to everyone here tonight that we are a recommending body and that we do review land use. A lot of the things regarding stop signs and things like that are kind of outside of our purview. There's a lot of staff members that make that decision with the city council, where those decisions are made. What we're reviewing is, is the land use versus the ordinance and things like that. So, I do want to clarify that as we kind of move this along. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff or the applicant after the public hearing has closed? Or any additional discussion? Commissioner Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I do have one question. I, I thought the, the point about the, the driveway being across from Chateau Lane, I, I thought that was a, a, a good question. Is that, in terms of engineering and traffic flow, does that, the idea of potentially moving that, is that from a safety perspective and so forth, what?
Are you going to take that one?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I actually brought Brian Nemeth along tonight, who is, is our traffic expert that reviewed the traffic data. And I thought, you know what, there's, there's several different traffic questions going on out there. Maybe Brian can step up to the podium and kind of answer all that. You know, as far as, as far as access, you know, across from that, that is typical, line them up, access spacing, you know, with the speed limit out there. If it was anywhere else along there, I don't even think it would meet access spacing guidelines. So, but I think, I'll let Brian just kind of answer all of the traffic questions that you may have.
Thank you, Brian. To Commissioner Walters' question about the, the parking or the exit points meeting.
Yeah, so, the, the main reason for that, if you think about the way that traffic is coming into any intersection, is you want the left turns not to be in the same space at the same time from two different directions. So, by having everything lined up at one intersection at this location, for instance, the westbound left versus the eastbound left would not be crossing their paths. If that driveway were any further east, the left turn into Chateau Lane for westbound would be conflicting with the eastbound left into that driveway to the north. And then, as far, if you were to move it west, that would still satisfy that, that conflict, that you wouldn't have that conflict there. But you may end up with the intersections too close to another intersection, such as by, at Grand Avenue.
So, this is helping reduce the potential for future collisions?
Correct.
Because you would have the potential for somebody turning while somebody's traveling through the road and, at different junctions in the road.
Right, correct. Somebody going straight through, because they're making the left, they're also tending to go over to that one side. If somebody else is making that left also, they, they're trying to take over that same space. So, you want to eliminate that.
There was a question about stop signs at that intersection. Was that something that was discussed throughout this process?
That was not discussed. So, any stop signs as per requirements for the state of Minnesota has to meet the stop sign warrants in the manual and uniform traffic control devices. And so, then you have to look at the volume of the main line, one hundred and forty-fifth versus any of the side streets, and that'd be Chateau Lane and the driveway. And that has to meet a certain volume threshold throughout the day.
So, you have a certain number of cars that are coming to justify a, a stop sign?
Correct. And an always stop sign, I think, is typically three hundred vehicles per hour. So, that'd be your peak hour of your day. And it has to meet it for eight hours of the day. So, eight hours, the twenty-four hours have to at least have three hundred vehicles on your main line. And then, I think it's two hundred vehicles on the side street.
Okay.
And a typical residential neighborhood off Chateau Lane would not have the two hundred.
Is the paint on this dotted, dashed white, what is the traffic paint on, on this road right now? I was just there the other day, but I didn't take close attention to that.
I did not pay close attention to that either when I was out there.
Maybe we could do a Google Earth. We don't need that this second. Commissioners, are there any questions for Brian? We'll leave them up here.
Speed limit?
Yeah, so, speed limit is by state statute in the state of Minnesota, is set by the Minnesota Department of Transportation. So, any speed limits is not a local jurisdictional decision or even the roadway authority's decision. It's based on the, the Minnesota Department of Transportation. You can request a speed study by them. Typically, what they'll do is they'll measure the speeds out there. And they set the speed limit based on how people are driving it, not what you want it to be. So, that's considered to be as nationally, actually internationally, speed limits are set by the, what the majority of traffic is driving it, because that is the safest speed that people are, you want everybody to drive very close to the same speed. This makes it a safer roadway. So, what they'll do is they'll set up their two counters or they do radar guns sometimes too. They'll take the speed limits and figure out what it is. There's a, a plus and a minus to that. If the local jurisdiction requests a speed limit and a speed study by MinDOT, MinDOT may keep it the same, they may lower it, but they also may raise the speed limit. But that's all set by the Minnesota Department of Transportation.
Okay. It does look like it is a solid yellow, at least exists on Google Maps right now. Commissioners, are there any questions regarding traffic while we have Brian up here? Commissioner Singh?
Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners, we have heard from people who live around that area on Chateau Lane and, you know, and you can sense their concern over traffic. I understand, Brian, that the Department of Transportation, I think, sets the speed limit. However, we as the local authority, we have to take into consideration the safety of our people. And I would strongly request that as this application goes through, that traffic be considered and seriously too. Whoever will do that, if this, the next stage for this application is the city council, which meets next week, I think. And I, I would, I would hope that if the city council cannot set speed limit, at least make a recommendation for some study that the Department of Transportation can do. I would hate to know that this project goes up, the traffic increases, and somebody get hurt, one of our people get hurt. I mean, it doesn't take much to get, and then five miles per hour can make a big difference one way or the other. So, my request is that it be taken into consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioners. Singh?
And I've been on the commission for quite a while, so I, I typically get dizzy and fall down when we start talking about some of the traffic rules. And I know we, we can't set speed limits. I, I understand that. I would, I, I would be just curious, and I'm not looking for a recommendation, but from a, is it even feasible for the city to add some of your things? Because I, I do agree with the resident. I, I drove this area several times, trying to understand traffic. And when you are traveling east on one hundred and forty-fifth, the developer of Chateau Lane did an excellent job of buffering. There's sizable conifer trees and a, a pretty sizable berm. And if you don't know that Chateau Lane is there when you're driving around that corner, that intersection kind of, you know, it does come up on you very fast. I would have to agree with the resident that spoke about that. And this may not be a very popular comment, but I, I do think as, as we've gone through some of these applications, at least having the, if the application goes through the street, across the street, it's going to visually tell people when they're coming around the corner that there is an intersection there. But my, my question would be is, does the city have the ability to do other signage that's like blind intersection, those kind of things that could be along that berm that could highlight that intersection a little better than it is today? Because it's really a blind intersection. Do we have those? I mean, I'm not, I mean, I, I always trust that the traffic folks would look at it and is it the right thing? I'm just, just questioning.
Yeah, I mean, those, those signs are allowed by, you know, the roadway authority can put those signs up. The experience has been with those type of warning signs, they don't tell the driver what to do. So, you tell them there's a blind intersection, does that mean they need to slow down? Does that mean they need to do what? That's the problem with some of those signs that are, that are allowable, but yet they don't tell the driver anything. So, typically, we do not put those signs in, but they may be put in certain circumstances. But.
It was just a question. It is, with the trees that are there, it's almost impossible to see Chateau Lane when you're going east on one hundred and forty-fifth.
One other thing that I'll just mention is, one forty-fifth is a, is a stated route designated by the city with the state and all of the design parameters, horizontal curves, vertical curves do meet stated guidelines. So, the way it is designed right now does accommodate that speed. And, and the other thing that I'll say regarding the, the speed study, if, if a speed study is done, again, back to what Brian alluded, there, there is the possibility, and a, a lot of times, the residents are the ones that can feel it. If, if they feel people are speeding out there, people probably are going faster than what it's posted at. And if a study is done, it, it, it could actually increase the speed. So, it's, 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 it's one of those things you want to be careful, do you ask or not?
Okay, so.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Reddick. Any other questions for Brian? I'll have them up here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There was a mention of, of the pending project, the Healy Ram project, and I don't have any background on that, but I would imagine there's going to be some extensive research on the, the traffic in and around that area that addresses some of the stuff we're talking about here tonight, because that is a much larger project with probably a lot more background needed. Do we have any questions for the applicant from the I just, I have one, one quick question regarding the driveway. The southern driveway The southern driveway, the one that we're discussing right now, is that intended to be constructed with the primary building? Or is that something that would potentially be coming later with the proposed medical building? Or is that?
So the, the southern driveway would share access with the proposed medical office building, so it's part of this, the, the current phase?
The first phase? Okay. And that is a dual-way entry point? There's no one-way access?
Correct.
Okay.
Dual entry.
Okay. That was my only real question as it related to that. Is there any other questions for the applicant while we have him up here? Commissioner Reddick?
So we, we discussed a few things. So the recommendation in reference to the exterior glazing, I think we're at twenty-four point eight and the minimum's twenty-five. So that seems to be a reasonable doable plan. Can you talk to us a little bit about? I, I probably, given your comments, I don't think I support the, the requirement for the sidewalk, but that's just my comment. We can certainly have some discussions. And as far as the exterior elevations and the use around the building, can you give me, how far off are we? I'm sorry, it may be in our background and now I've forgotten.
At, at a maximum, twenty-five percent. They would need to include more brick, twenty-five percent more brick or stone. Could even be glass, that higher quality material. Not all elevations are that far off. Some are, are closer to that fifty percent cap than others for lap siding. And from a staff standpoint, how that gets applied to each elevation where we'd like to work with the applicant on. And I don't have the numbers either right in front of me as far as each elevation and what that specific would be, but we're comfortable as long as it's not greater than fifty percent and they're still meeting city code essentially.
And then the requirement for the additional, it's kind of important to me that we do have some of the plantings and help at least screen the property is, is there any concern over that requirement with the additional conifers?
No, no concern. We're okay with adding that.
Okay, thank you. Chair, that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Reddick. Any other questions for the applicant? We are, as far as the exterior elevations go, we're at seventy percent. And staff is asked for fifty percent. Have we ever made a, a deviation of that high of a percentage point in the past where we are today?
I'm not sure. I'd have to, I mean, I don't have the research in front of me to compare. You do have the ability as a planning commission to recommend a deviation or a change from city code. As well as, because it's a planning and development, city council ultimately has a decision to approve something that doesn't meet code. You know, we've over time evaluated our ordinances and changed our ordinances. We've made some recent changes as well. Staff feels pretty pretty firm in, in our suggestion of the fifty percent because there's been, there's been a lot of evaluation as of recent. Not only for, for our commercial zoning. I think, gosh, within the past six months, we went through a thorough review of this, so. And I don't know if we've had many applications, Deb, that you can think of. I mean, it, it's, it's, we've evolved a lot recently and given some great flexibility just through our city code. I guess I don't have a, a strong answer for you. And I can't point to maybe a specific project, but we're, we're already pretty flexible and have done so, added some flexibility as of recent.
Okay. It's just, in my opinion, that looks like probably the largest hindrance to this project. And probably the one where the, where the farthest apart. And the, the reason why, at least in my opinion, I feel like there could be some wiggle room on that is because of the reasons in the narrative that Roar's discussed about comparing this project to Richfield with the lower land costs, the city incentives, and this location looks like it's on the moon. And how much work they're going to have to do to grade and, and level that, that spot because it's not a, a built, ready to build location. So I'm not necessarily advocating that we move on seventy percent. I wish there was a way we could move that fifty percent or come to a middle ground. So we don't potentially create that hindrance for this project. That's just me thinking aloud right now. It seems like the rest of this stuff doesn't seem unattainable. Commissioner Singh?
If we can ask the applicant if there's any room for a compromise here. I mean, staff is, you know, has made a recommendation and we have, these things usually be resolved when we compromise. And I wonder if we can ask applicant if there is any room for, for compromise here. That will give us an indication what our motion can be.
We did speak to that a little bit earlier, but I mean, where is that on your scale?
Yeah, so just, just doing a rough kind of quantity takeoff of the square footages of the building. If we're to increase twenty-five percent to brick or stone, I mean, that, that it's three to four times more expensive, so we're talking close to three hundred thousand dollars in additional expense to the project cost. That's, we're trying to move forward with the city without any economic incentive via TIF or land cost. And so as I mentioned earlier, we're open to revising some facades in some key locations just to kind of in the spirit of compromising with staff and the neighborhood concerns about the look of the buildings. And so sort of, the, the other piece of it is this is B-one zone district, but the, the use is somewhat residential in nature. And if you look at R-four zoning design requirements, it's not that significant of stone requirement. It's closer to where we're actually proposed in terms of requirement of this. So I think those couple of points should be taken into consideration. But as I mentioned, I think there's a compromise in there. And so I don't know if we leave it open to, we will present a new elevation to staff and the staff can have final comment or approval on it. But I, I don't know that sending a specific percentage requirement accomplishes what you guys are trying to do, which is to, you know, compromise with the commission as well as the neighborhood to make a more aesthetically pleasing building.
A compromise could be if, if you're looking for something that on perhaps three elevations, it meets the requirement and maybe not on the backside. Or, you know, something of that nature. Another alternative is the applicant can revise the plan and come back to you with a revised elevation at the next meeting date. That's an option as well. As well as the other options presented already by staff.
I'd like to get the temperament of the rest of the commission on that. That's kind of where I, I stand as far as the materials. I do like the idea of maybe revising the placement of material. Just to, the more visible parts of the building is a good idea. But if I'm the only one up here advocating for that one item, I won't push it, but where, where are you guys, Commissioner Reddick?
Okay, I'll play my hand.
Thank you.
Okay. We kind of ticked through these. I think as, I think we've kind of agreed, and I know you don't have the recommendations maybe memorized or anything, but really from the conifer all the way through, they seem pretty basic. And in many cases, the deviation or the recommendations are just paperwork. It really comes down to the first four. I would advocate removing number four, which is requiring some, requiring you to put in a sidewalk. Number three, you believe is doable. Number two, I, I, I guess I've been burned by this in the past, but I, I support you working with staff. I think it's, it's very important to me that the best facade faces the, the, the units to the south. It's really important to me that we screen that as best we can. We kind of went through that with Berne from the standpoint of, of conifers and how you hide that, that building as, as much as possible. And I also don't like getting into percentages. That scares me and to commit to something and is it right or wrong? I have a lot of faith in our staff to work with you to come up with what we believe is the best we can do from an economic standpoint. I would say I, I believe the building in Richfield is a, is an excellent looking building. I probably, and this isn't a your application thing, I, I might disagree with some of the specifics we have in our code and that's why I asked. I mean, you varied the board and batten versus the lap siding versus some shingles and some different colors. And so it's, I'm not the pickiest person in the world, but I believe that the building is very presentable in, in what's being put up today. So in the spirit of moving the application forward, I might question why we have that in there and hopefully you and staff could, could work through that. And then, and lastly, the, the parking stalls. I'll be real honest, the, it's a very difficult site to develop. There's tight property lines. And we have some pretty tight rules on parking. And I, if the parking is needed, I, I think we need to give the variance without specifically requesting something. I'm not a big fan of demanding certain stormwater things. If the site meets stormwater requirements, it meets stormwater requirements. If you want to meet your stormwater requirement via impervious surface block, then you, you can. But I, the, the rule should be here's, here's the stormwater requirements. You get at it however you want to get at it, whether it's ponds or tanks or or blocks. So that, Chair, I, I agree. I, I think we've got maybe some tweaking to do to number two. And I, if you don't have any issue with number one, then that, that may be a mute point, but I think we're pretty close on three and four. Otherwise, I would be in support. And, and I, I guess I want to touch to some customers or residents' concerns. I do believe it's a blind quarter and I do believe the city could, we could hopefully do something with that. I, and you may not agree with me on the intersection, the new intersection may make your intersection a little more visible. We can't control speed limits. That's above our pay grade. The, the future development piece, I, I certainly understand that and staff always takes that into consideration. But we have to take every single applicant in front of us on its merits. And if this application passes, then we have kind of a new rule from traffic and what's going to be on the street. And then the next application then has to, to react to what, what that, that application that's been approved is, is pushed through. The ladies' questions about screening, very typically, we get at this point that there's something in there about screening of HVAC units and trash containment. And in many cases, at this point, that detail is not drawn into the plans. And the, the, the comment in here is just about that we must meet city code. That if the HVAC units are visible from a certain point, they have to be screened. And if the trash is going to be kept outside the building, it has to be, there has to be a roof and there has to be walls and a gate. And that's all kind of worked out pretty, pretty cleanly in our, in our code. So I think there was maybe some other questions that people asked. I was trying to write as quickly as I could. And I think we talked about the Chateau Lane and the, from the standpoint of where the entrance into development needs to be from a safety standpoint, we can't really offset that because you've got a, a bigger safety issue than we, than we could have today. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Reddick. Commissioner Singh?
Mr. Chair, as Commissioner Bradrick just spoke about this, I think I would also agree with him that we remove item four. All the others I can live with. Item two is the one that is, I think is the most important one there. And if we, I, the applicant, no, Ms. Dean made some suggestions about working with, with the applicant to reach situation where we got to make a recommendation to the city council. So even if we make a recommendation, now it still has to go forward to city council. But if, if the applicant is willing to work with Ms. Dean and staff, we can move this ahead. I, I suggest remove four. The others are, are minor matters as far as I'm concerned. Number two is, is a sticky one.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I guess I would agree with the direction we're headed here. I, and channeling my, my inner Commissioner Benke since he's not here. I, I, I do have concerns about the exterior elevation, the, the materials piece. I do think, you know, we are granting a deviation for the height of the building in particular. We want to ensure that it's a a quality building, obviously. And, but, but I think the approach that you have outlined here, I, I don't know what that results in terms of changing language for, for staff to work on that for the recommendation, but I'm.
I have some thoughts. We can run that back to staff.
I'm, I'm generally in agreement there, so.
So where we are now is, and I would agree with removing number four. What the elephant in the room is, is item, number two.
I have a test qualification, question to the chair. If we move this along with the hope that staff and the applicant can work out number two, is that, can we do that? I don't want them to come back to us. They will delete the project and, you know, I, I'm trying to avoid them having to come back.
I agree.
My only concern is that we have a specific fifty percent cap within our city code requirement. So in order to accept a deviation, you have to have a, you do have to have a number committed to. And so we, we need something. Otherwise, my suggestion would be for the applicant to work on the details, to come up with that number and present that change to you.
So Ms. Dean, we can reach that fifty percent by doing different things. Right? Because you were saying that we don't, that the, we need to improve on the front. On the back, probably we don't need to do as much.
You can, you can write the condition so that all elevations except for the east elevation facing the neighboring property to the east, the church. That, that's the only elevation that does not need to meet the fifty percent requirement. So then that side has more siding or whatever side, you know, you might choose.
Concentrate on a certain side.
And I don't know if a lot of times what will happen, maybe not in Burnsville, but in other cities is that the, if it's something that's significant that affects the architecture, a lot of times it'll go back to the applicant to work out those details and then bring it back if you can't decide on
Chair, I would propose that we currently the building itself is at seventy percent. And I'm hearing staff saying they need a percentage. And I, I guess I understand that. My question to the applicant would be if we set it at seventy with, you know, understanding our goals as a community, if we set it at seventy, you're already there. You're committing or willing to work with us on the exposable facades, specifically the west facade and the south facade facing the unit to enhance that to a certain extent to give us the best product available.
Correct.
Correct?
Are we, are we at seventy-four percent?
It ranges depending on which elevation you are, anywhere from seventy to seventy-five. I don't know if your architect can speak further to which elevation.
I'm not really looking to get into percentages by side. I think it's just a, a building number and let staff and the applicant work, work through that.
So Commissioner Reddick, are you recommending we? So Commissioner Braddock, are you recommending we change that percentage point from fifty?
From fifty to, to seventy?
To seventy.
Just to staff's point about needing a number in there?
Hmm.
And I do know that, I did read in the minutes that when their application was to the city, they didn't have any speci-, we didn't give any specific requirements for external, um, finishes.
We didn't get into those details.
Yeah. So.
However, we do assume you meet the minimums.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Um, I like the direct, I, I agree that, that we should, that number, that we do need to give staff a number, um, prior to, are you willing, is, are you willing to make some, um, give up some, so maybe we don't, maybe go to seventy, but meet somewhere at like sixty or sixty-five percent of the entire building? We're not going to sit up here and micromanage your building on which side. Um, I understand there's building costs, but I also understand you're taking a piece of land that's not the most desirable from a building, um, perspective and doing something with it. So that's where I, I think we're all trying to figure out a, an easy medium here.
Yeah, we'd be, I think, we'd be comfortable at sixty-five percent.
Okay. And we're not the final say, so this would go to city council where they would finally. Are you comfortable? Are staff comfortable with that?
You know, from a staff standpoint, ultimately, it's, it's your recommendation. Um, city council's the one that ultimately approves not only this project, but what's in our city code. Um, what I can say is we, we have evaluated our city code as recently as six months ago. Um, staff feels pretty firm about this, you know, meeting the minimum threshold, meeting the minimum code requirements. Um, but you have that, you have that discretion, you have that right to, to make other recommendations if you feel, um, they're warranted.
Can I, I'll speak for myself. I think if this was an application on County Route Forty-two, um, a nice buildable plot of land, I don't know that we would be having this conversation, but given the circumstances surrounding the land, um, that's where I'm coming from. Um, Commissioner Braddock has, uh, mentioned that. I would like to know where Commissioner Singh and Walter are at on.
Mr. Chair, I'll be honest with you. I, if, if we cannot meet the minimum of fifty, I can't support it.
Okay. Commissioner Walter? Or we can make a motion, do it that way. I'll let you speak.
Well, yeah, I will, uh, make a motion. We'll, 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 we'll see where it goes. Um, uh, I move that the, and you aren't, all don't know which direction I'm going in, do I make the motion? So there's just some suspense. Um, I move that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the preliminary plat, a zoning amendment from B-one to B-one PUD in concept and development stage PUD for a hundred and thirty-four unit senior living, um, senior living building in concept stage PUD for a fifteen thousand square foot medical office building located southeast of Grand Avenue and north of a hundred and forty-fifth Street East. Subject to the following, uh, subject to the conditions, uh, the, the conditions laid out in the recommendation with the exception of number four.
To be stricken?
Yeah, to strike number four. So, uh, sixteen, uh, fifteen conditions if you take out, um, that. But then, um, I'm just going to leave the motion at that. So that would leave the fifty, uh, the, 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 the siding shall not exceed fifty percent of the building in place. Does that make sense to folks? So the recommendation, as staff made it, with the fifty percent, but minus the sidewalk issue.
Okay.
Clear?
Clear.
So I guess I've sided with Commissioner Singh.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
My honor, the second, that motion, Mr. Chair.
All of those in favor of Commissioner Walter's motion, say aye.
Aye. Um, I'll say aye.
Aye.
I think.
I'm voting, oh, no, no, I, 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 I'm for it. Now I'm for it because it has the fifty percent. It must meet the fifty percent.
Correct.
And I'm willing to just move the application forward to the city council. I don't want to delay the application.
Um, so we have three ayes and an aye, and the motion passes. So that will go to the city council on June nineteenth at five-thirty. Um, continue to work with staff, um, and the city council. This probably won't be on, well, it won't be on consent because we had a division, so they'll be discussing this, um, more with you guys.
Okay.
So, thank you for your presentation and for all the information tonight.
Um, Mr. Chair, we'd like to thank the residents who came out and, and, and be heard. It is very important that when matters like these are being discussed, you come out and say your piece and let the commission make their recommendation. So thank you all for coming out.
Thank you. That brings us to item number six on this evening's agenda, which is updates. Um, any updates from the commission? No updates? Updates from staff?
Staff's closed agenda for the next meeting. Uh, also, there will be, uh, planning commission and overall commissioner training for, uh, new commissioners for city commissions, um, that will be held on the twenty-eighth of June, uh, from six to seven-thirty. And, um, in addition to that, we do have, and I think the, uh, planning commission, you are aware of that, but Wednesday night, uh, there is a, um, meeting with the Economic Development Commission. And they are, um, identifying or going through, uh, their, uh, proposal for strategic plan. Uh, and planning commission has been invited to that as well. So, um, with that, the only other item would be if the commission would like us to post, um, public meeting notice for after your next meeting, um, if you would like to, um, say farewell to, to the commissioners who will be leaving us.
I would be in favor of that.
Our venerable.
If we want to have a quorum after the next meeting, but I'll leave it up to the, to.
We can publish it and then.
Do we need a motion for that?
No, we don't need a motion. Just need a potion.
I don't think that's a good idea, provided they show up.
Yeah, it'll just be me and Commissioner Walter.
We can just, we can just honor them.
Thank you, Deb. And you said that June twenty-eighth meeting was from six to seven-thirty?
Yes. Yeah, for planning, or, it's all commissioner training.
Okay. Um, if there's no other updates from the commission, I would stand for a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Chair.
Motion in a second. All of those in favor? Aye opposed and the motion carries. Thank you for joining us tonight and have a great rest of your evening.